One.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome to the Milton School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. I hope everyone is well on this lovely fall evening. Our first item this evening is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, additions, or subtracts or subtractions that they'd like to make to the agenda? No? Nothing? Okay. Then I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and then we can all just like, a show of hands for the agenda is fine, they told me. Okay, everyone approve the agenda. Okay, great. Six, zero. All right. Well, we will start this meeting with our report from Superintendent Jet. Welcome. Good to see you again, Superintendent Jet. Hi, Janet.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point in time, I believe I'm promoting Catherine Toeffek from Schools to Career. Hopefully making sure she's promoted to a panelist. Catherine, if you could turn on your camera that'll elevate you to the presentation mode, if she's there. Perfect. We have Catherine here with us tonight from Schools to Career Partnership. It has been working with Milton Public Schools for many years now. And she's here to talk about some great opportunities and partnership for Milton Public School students in the area of STEM. And I thought it was nice for her to be elevated and be able to talk about the opportunities afforded to Milton Public School students. So I would do a quick introduction, and Catherine, I turn it over to you.
Thank you for having me tonight. We had a chance to meet about a week and a half ago with Karen Cahill, the president at President, so the principal at Milton High School, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight. Joyce White, it was logging on, and I don't know if she's coming on as a panelist, and she was going to introduce me, but I first want to recognize working with Joyce at the high school, so maybe she's she's coming on, but I will jump in and I can introduce myself. I am the director of the School to Careers Partnership, which is a partnership that the Milton Public Schools has been part of for twenty years, looking back. And this is a partnership of eight public school districts in our region. Our focus is at the middle school and the high school level. And our purpose really is to inspire and inform our students to transition from high school into further education. And as you know, the vast majority of students at Milton High School do successfully graduate high school and do plan to further their education. So our purpose is to provide all kinds of experiences for students both in the middle school and the high school, so they can determine what is it they're good at, what is it they're interested in, and how does that translate into what they're going to study and what they're going to create for their endeavors after high school? So we provide, I'm just gonna look at my cheat sheet here, if you don't mind. We provide a lot of industry-specific opportunities, actually. They're all industry-specific. Our focus is all of the different areas that a student can go into. As Superintendent Jet mentioned, we do an awful lot in the STEM area because, A, we're in Massachusetts. B, there's tremendous opportunity and growth in those fields. So we work with all kinds of leaders in the field, and as I said, Joyce White was supposed to have a little presentation that actually will show you all of the companies we work with, but I can I can wing it right now.
He's coming on now.
Oh, great. Okay. I because we had actually worked, we had worked on a website together this week that I know is being launched through the Milton Public School, so everything I'm sharing tonight will be launched on the website. Hi, Joyce. I started without you. So all of this.
I'm glad that you did. I'm very sorry.
But right now, I'm just winging it through, Joyce.
So don't worry about it. For some reason, I wasn't a panelist until just a minute ago, but here I am, and I apologize for any issues that happened. But hi, everybody. Thank you for inviting us. I'm sure Catherine already went through everything, but.
I just started, Joyce, and my quick question to you is, we'd worked on a website this week, so all of this will be on on the website. But I'm just talking about what we do. We do business site visits, classroom speakers, mentorships and internships, shadow days, kind of expert Q and A panels. We do a lot of full-day seminars. In fact, some of them we run at Milton High School. One that we've run many times is a health and medical seminar where we will have four or five major hospitals. Come to Milton High in all the different specialty areas. I've worked with, of course, Milton, Beth Israel Dickinson Milton, Solskjaer Hospital, Dana Farber, Mass General, Children's Hospital, and they'll send all kinds of people from the therapeutic to doctors and surgeons, to people that are in dietetics, so they can have a chance to speak to all of our students. We've actually had, oh, thank you, Joyce. We've actually had presidents of hospitals come in and talk to the students and say, if you're interested, here's my contact information. Follow up with me, so you can have an opportunity to shadow or ask questions. So we have these kinds of programs. We usually run about a hundred days of programming a year. Thank you, Joyce. These are some of the companies we work with. So what we're looking for in our partnership between our eight school districts, we have ten thousand students. So what that enables School to School to Careers to do is to recruit significant leading partners in our field. If someone from Milton High were calling any one of these listed here, like, say, you're calling Amazon or Google, it's much harder to get a response for our students in our region, but when you approach a large business that you have ten thousand students in the metro Boston region, in schools that successfully educate our students, and they graduate, suddenly, we actually have a very valuable commodity. We have the workforce that's coming and rising. And what we're finding with our high school students in particular is, in high school, they are acutely wanting to find out what the opportunities are, what they need to do to pursue those opportunities, and then we talk about STEM. But when a student has a chance to walk through the Broad Institute, or MIT, or Vertex, or Biogen IDEC, and they're in the labs, and they have a chance to speak to the staff about all the different opportunities that are there, whether you are a certificate graduate with a lab degree, or you have a bachelor's degree in chemistry, or you have a master's degree, or maybe you're seeking your PhD, but there's a place for all of our students in a company like a Biogen or the Genzyme Genetics that are in our area. And when we can go to these companies with the schools that we have, they're eager to inform our students about what the opportunities are, and our students, as all of you parents know, come back to live with us during their summer vacations. They're already shopping around for their freshman internships that summer. So our companies that we're working with are eager to see that transition, and that's really our goal, is to inspire students and to inform them, and we do start in the middle school. All our middle school programs are focused on STEM right now. We run Rocket Clubs. We run a girls' STEM meetup, and again, we have leaders come in that connect directly with our students. And as a result, we have hundreds of students trying out different things. And I should mention, some students go to some of our events and say it was the worst day they ever had, and that way they know they've already ruled out what they might have pursued without the knowledge and the experience. So Joyce White is our contact at Milton High School. I work directly with the middle school developing programs there. Any students that are interested in these programs, they go through our local liaison. All students that walk through the front door at Milton High School are eligible for our programs, and that's a really important hallmark because we want all of our students to succeed. As you can see, these are some of the companies we work with, but anytime someone's coming to Boston, I like to make sure that we meet them first, that we're out there and that we're making those connections. But we do, as I said, a lot in the STEM field, life sciences, finance, and most anybody that has a world headquarters in our area, we do work with. And Milton High and the Pierce Middle School have always sent loads of students. We usually have requests for extra opportunities, which we always provide, but if you are interested in seeing what the different opportunities are, Joyce, I know you're launching this website. All of our, it's a direct link to our website. All of the opportunities on there, the Milton students are eligible for, and we have some coming up, but we had one last week where we had three young people that are in the STEM field, and I just got back some of the feedback from the students, and some of the feedback was, now I know I should persist even when it's difficult. I know I have mentors that I can count on, and this is really, this is just a poll we do electronically. So I was really, I just got it tonight, and that's the kind of message we want students to get, is that the opportunities are out there. We even do things in the trades. Thank you, Joyce. That's one of our ones coming up. The trades are a marvelous opportunity for our students, and we always have a percentage of students that, I maybe I shouldn't say it like this, but they don't really know what their plan is. They know they don't want to go to college, but we know at School to Careers the incredible opportunities that are out there. We don't want to miss those students transitioning that might not be going to college. But I could go on because I know how important it is to our students, and funny enough, I know how important it is to our parents. I'm a parent of three children, and having a child who's had a lot of experiences walking through the doors, and then they have an idea, this is what I could do. That's what we provide for our students. Any anything I missed or questions I can answer?
I will leave it up to the school committee members.
Oh, I can see that. Beverly, I can see your hand up. Sorry, I can sort of see you here on the side there.
Thank you. I'm very impressed by this programming, and it's nice to know that students within Milton have access to something that's very unprecedented. Would you share how students become aware of this, as well as keep abreast of what is, what are the options that are up on the calendar? How do they access this essentially?
Yes, that's a that's an excellent question. This will be on the school website, as I understand. So that that's an important thing. We wanted to make sure we had that on the on the website. I communicate everything to the superintendents and to the superintendent and the principals. Joyce White is our local team leader. It's really important that we have a staff person that works and knows the cast of characters in the building. And I know that the superintendent asked for an organizational meeting with several department chairs that we're scheduling. And we've worked with a lot of staff over the years that sometimes I can just reach out, and I know just who would really like to take advantage of it. But it's really the teachers, and as I said, any student that would like to have the opportunity, there there aren't any restrictions, I think, unless they have a significant absentee issue, but other than that, all of our students are welcome. Does that help? And anyone can get in touch with with Joyce White, and she can direct anyone to the information.
No, I thank you for sharing this because I have a feeling that there might be very little awareness amongst the students. And whether it's through, they express an interest in one of these areas through a club they're affiliated with, or a or a class that's an, that's not a core class, it's a great opportunity to connect those students that have a special interest with the reality of what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could just expand on that, when we met, that was one of the things in terms of STEM, to have a meeting with A.J. Melanson, Technology, Amy Tom, Science Department Head, Brian Silik, Math, and also cascading that out to different principals to make sure that the word gets out. I will make one little comment about student participation. Sometimes our students leave the building to go to other venues. That those venues may have limitations as to how many students are capable of going because obvious, even prior to COVID, you might have limitations on that, so that will, that would vary. And Milton High School has been very blessed over the course of a couple of last few years, hosting some of the, some of the events in the building where we're bringing in seven of the other eight communities into the school. And one of the things I think Catherine and I both agreed upon is better to have more students that we could deny than not having enough students show an interest. So I just wanted to share that, and I think Lizzie Carroll, Dr. Carroll has her hand up, and then Betty White.
Thank you. I agree. This is so exciting to learn about and seems like really wonderful opportunity for students. Do students, what is the commitment for students to participate? Is it sort of case by case, like there's this shadow day, and anybody who wants to sign up can sign up, or this panel, and you may come attend it? Or are they participating in the program overall, and that then gives them access to the opportunities? Does that question make sense?
It does, and some students can do one thing, or they can be repeat offenders, as I will say. I'll have one that comes to a health and medical event, and then to a legal forensics event, and then a business and finance event, because they're exploring. And that's what we want students to do. So there's no, there's no club they have to join or limitation. The only thing that we do ask in respect to the people that we are asking to commit and 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 work with us is that a student indicates some interest. So it's not just a free day out of school, which P.S., there are no free days out of school anymore. The students really do have to make up all their work. So we do ask that the student shows some indication of interest, and that, and actually, as the School to Careers Director, I never make any of those choices. Those are all made by a teacher at your school. So if a teacher recommends a student, it's always yes, on my part.
I see. Okay.
So some students do many different things, and we have some experiences that are longer. We run a a biotech and engineering symposium, April School Vacation, for four days, where students spend four days in and around the Boston-Cambridge area at either engineering or or pharma companies. And that is a four-day commitment, and and each of our schools actually can submit four, four to six students for that, and we modeled it on what universities are offering for some very expensive programming, but all of our programming is part of your public school, so. So some things are a little bit of a commitment.
And and it sounds like from that, it probably the principals would be in a better position to explain, like, how students may be selected for that type of opportunity, or to follow on member Ross Dunn's question, sort of how students can learn about the opportunities and be and then be selected.
But I. One of the things we try and do, especially in specific STEM areas, that if a teacher can take a whole class. And so what we'll try and do is negotiate, you know, maybe four or five opportunities with with a major partner, so a chemistry teacher can take their whole class. And that way, it's it's just the whole class could go. So we try and do that because it's just as important that our teachers go, because as you know, when a student is interested in a subject, they ask their teacher what they could do with it. So we we want our teachers to be part of this, and 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 they can see how their academic content is really relevant. We've had a lot of students turn around to teachers and say, oh, we did that in the lab, and I have to tell you, it warms a teacher's heart to hear that.
I just have two very quick final questions. One is, I noticed on the array of really impressive organizations and companies that participate, something like Boston Ballet. Is that, so I know that STEM is a focus that you have, but for something like Boston Ballet, like, are it, I'm inferring that there may be additional career pathways that could be sort of explored through organizations like that?
Hundred percent. We are, we're actually in the midst of planning a legal and forensic seminar because it's such a wide array of skills and talents and entry points. We've always done a performing arts seminar just because we really have a commitment to the arts and and how you actually can have a career in the arts. We do a lot in banking, business, and finance, because these are the key industries, and in STEM companies, all of those skills are needed. So even if someone were interested, say, in, you know, forensics, they could be hired at a biotech company or life science. So we actually look at all the verticals that are in with with companies, whether it's, you know, supply chain management, which we have done things on that, whether it's accounting. Our life science companies, we actually are doing a lot in HVAC because the life science companies actually live and die on their HVAC. That's a very sophisticated career path right now in that area. So we try and cover all the areas that we can imagine, and really, when we meet a wonderful company and partner, we want to have our our students see that life can be really great when it's time to go to work, because we all hope they're going to work.
Right. Thank you so much. That's that's really, really exciting to hear about. My my last quick question, you, I totally understand you may not have this sort of ready to share, but do you do you know, like, a ballpark number of how many Milton students we have had participating in this program?
Over the years, hundreds, if not more like thousands in the twenty years, and I and I do tally those students every year. So we always have hundreds of students at the Milton School every year. Joyce, we went over the numbers from last year. I don't have it right in front of me, but I'm happy to send that along. We just did a STEM panel last week that I mentioned, and I know we had four hundred students all together attend that, and I'm not sure what the breakdown is, but that's the upside of COVID, but yeah, we're gonna get out of the Zoom mode, but I actually provide that each year.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you. Good questions. Elizabeth, do you have a question?
Yes, I just remember maybe three or four years ago going to the Pierce Auditorium when Mass Clean Energy Center was there, and the students, it was an after-school program. I was invited because several Milton parents work there, including my brother at the time. And the kids were exposed to energy of, you know, wind energy and turbo energy and solar energy, and they were all broken into small groups and did did sort of like projects all afternoon, and I mean, just to see the energy and the enthusiasm for the exposure that these kids had, and what was striking to me was I was watching the audience of of students. There was a very diverse student body that was participating, lots of boys and lots of girls. It was pretty, pretty spread even in. And then they did like a survey afterwards where they talked to the kids and asked them a little bit about their impressions, and there were quite a few children who commented that they wanted to pursue more work in sciences and these fields. So just to see, even at that young age, the connections that the kids made, and it was, it was just really, really was exciting to be there and to observe it. So I know I've seen it in action, and it's a really good program.
Thank you. And you know what we're doing at the middle school? Convincing them to take challenging classes, that so they don't close the door at at the middle school level. So when they enter high school, they'll take those classes. And the first time I met the superintendent actually was at the Pierce Middle School. We were running a Rocket Club. We run a six-week after-school Rocket Club. And then we actually invite, like, rocket scientists and engineers to come and launch the rockets with the students, and the students at that age just are so thrilled to hear about their careers, and they treat them like celebrities. But the the engineers, we have actually Monday and Tuesday of next week, Rocket launches at two of our middle schools. And our our engineers are so committed to encouraging, inspiring our students that I appreciate that you had that experience too, and the superintendent, actually, I shouldn't say this, but I first met him because I was wondering, who was the guy running across the field to get the rocket? I love that. That was our first meeting. So I do agree, it's really inspirational, influential for the students, and we hear that repeated when we're going and recruiting people to talk. Now people are saying, I had someone come in high school, or I wish I had someone come to my high school. I would love to have known that. So, but we love the work. So I'm taking up too much of your time, but anything else I can answer?
Before Dr. Craig had asked her question, I think one of the goals of our meeting about a week and a half ago is really to try to in in the new role of superintendent, see how can we better promote and expand and highlight that, and that was something that was discussed in that meeting, and I was very thankful that Catherine was able to come out and meet with myself, Janet Shan, Joyce White. I think that we were able to kind of identify ways in which we could better promote this, this wonderful program, so looking forward to it. Dr. Craig, head.
First of all, thank you for this great program and for explaining it, because I really didn't know about it. I want to say two things. One is that I teach at a college where students are coming in supposed to know what their major is going to be, and they are taking courses right away that are very highly specific to that major. that are very highly specific to that major. So these kinds of programs are so valuable to those students to give the, to, you know, get their um hands in it a little bit um to know whether that really would be um something that they would wanna pursue um for the next four years. Um, secondly, and this sort of piggybacks on um what members Ross Denny and Carol were asking, and this question is for Joyce specifically. Let's say you have a hypothetical middle schooler who is STEM oriented. And they might be interested in that biotech engineering over school break or one of the other programs that I saw listed here. Where should that individual go and how how can they access? Um, you know, finding out about all of these programs in the best possible way.
That's a great question. Thank you. The um, what we've done today is presented our new website that where um AJ Melanson is gonna be posting on Milton Public Schools website. And it has contact for me that they they can get in touch with me directly. And I'll be able to just get them involved in any way that I can or any way that they're interested in becoming involved. So we've got contact right there on the Milton Pub. It's not quite up yet, but um we went over it today, AJ and I did. And um, it's ready to go once we're um all set with it. Um, so that's one way they can do it. They can call me. Um, I'm a teacher at Milton High School. So they can always get in touch with with me through there, but the website does have my email posted on that. Um, and part of what you were saying earlier, I just gonna quickly comment is what we do here also gets these kids ready for when they go into their guidance counselor. Because that is precious time for them. They are um thinking about, you know, what they're gonna do, how they're gonna do it. But oftentimes they'll go in with no idea. And if they've gone through some of these programs, it helps them to uh hone in a little better what it is they wanna do. And then they can partner with their guidance counselor rather than go in kind of stone cold, not understanding what it is that their role is to partner with their guidance. So um that, I like that comment too, uh Dr. Craig had that you said you mentioned with your at your college level, it happens at the high school level also. Um, so yeah, they can just contact me directly through my website or through the my email that's gonna be on the website soon.
Right. I'm sorry, could I bring up one stumbling block since I'll just throw it out there. Sometimes students are so anxious to miss a day or half a day of school. I know, uh Joyce, you've you have been faced with that. So or some of the teachers are reluctant to have the students miss. I I I understand that. So anyway, or ideas or encouragement would be very helpful.
I think too, and and that's a great um point, Catherine. And I know Mr. Jet has also in the past just said it's really important to get them to these opportunities. And not that he overrides a teacher, he would never do that. But um, just encourages them to to see the opportunities that are are um that some students really need to get out and see for themselves how a certain um business is gonna run. Or just just the exposure, any experience like that is so valuable for them. It it is um usually um unless there's something really un- unusual going on, the student is allowed to go.
They are. And so sometimes the students that are, you know, they're so good in every class. Sometimes those are the students that struggle the most with trying to figure out which direction to go.
They have a lot of choices.
Yeah. But thank you for having me tonight. And it's again, always been a pleasure.
Two more questions, Catherine.
Oh, wait, more questions? Oh, I didn't see them. I'm sorry.
And then member Ross Denny.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Jet, and thank you Catherine and Joyce for this presentation. Um, I I so just this, my comment as and my thoughts as I was listening to uh your presentation and to the comments and questions from my co- um co-school committee members is the idea of training for teachers and understanding the importance of this um kind of programming. Um, and understanding how to support students to make the decisions to maybe miss a day of school or to recognize those students who might need um this kind of support for whom school might be a challenge, but for whom opportunities like this would open doors that they hadn't thought about. So I really think Superintendent Jet, as you think about, you know, this program, which has been successful for twenty years and you think about how it might grow and change over time, thinking about that capacity for teachers um and understanding to support this program in in different ways um for students um and and different learning styles and and diverse learning. Because um the connections to real life experiences is sometimes um more valuable to students as they grow um than the in-classroom work that can also be challenging for some of them at at this age in their life. And I just had a really other quick question. So it's mostly STEM focused, but do you focus on other careers as well? Like I was noticing that there's nothing here about education or anything like that.
Margaret, I actually have just booked a day for future educators uh this spring.
Yay.
Because again, we we are looking at all fields of growth, but we're looking at all fields. So it's not just, you know, it it's all fields. So uh, we have worked with uh Bridgewater State University uh doing a full educator's day. And I just contacted them last week saying, can we do it? And so we are gonna offer that in the spring. And we always actually get a good response from the students to go to that. So we are recruiting the next generation of teachers too.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think in the field, particularly in the field of early childhood and those fields, there's a real need um for for um for future educators. Um, and that would be a great opportunities. And also you can work for large corporations that that run educational programming and learn different things as well. So thank you so much for for sharing that.
Member Ross Denny.
My actual, my comment builds on something Margaret said, which is how do you support students that don't wanna miss a day of school? Because the curriculum really is rigorous and there's high expectations and missing a day or a couple of days might be challenging. So whenever there's an opportunity to train teachers on or even br- br- raising their awareness of these opportunities, um, it'd be wonderful if you also set the expectation that if a student misses school for an event like this, make it possible for them to make up that content in in a way that's um not punitive, but very encouraging and supportive of of this programming because it's it's a wonderful opportunity. And it's a shame if someone couldn't attend because there's a test or there's a class that seems very important that they don't wanna miss.
Thank you.
So I don't see any more questions and to close on both the last two uh questions or comments. That was the whole purpose of the meeting and prior to superintendency as the principal, I didn't have the jurisdiction of uh expanding on some of these programs, but everything that you guys talked about today is what we talked about. Catherine's gonna continue in in her communications with uh Joyce White. She's gonna include myself on the emails. Typically she will work with the school liaison. I think that the program's in good hands, but making sure that everyone finds ways to promote it through our communications, through our blogs, through our website. Uh Joyce White has already talked about updating the website. These are initiatives or actions that are taken that weren't done in in previous years. And so we hope, and then finally, uh, we hope that that improves. And then finally, I could, I can't speak for the middle school, but I could speak for the high school. I don't recall ever once in my ten years of high school principal or my five years at the middle school principal that any kid was, any student was penalized for missing a day for a program like this. If anything, they were afforded the opportunity. I think what we need to do a better job is making sure we take that anxiety off the shoulders of the students who are worried about and letting them know. But I I just wanna assure people that uh with, that is something that we definitely endorse. And and we work with students around that opportunity, but making it widely known that it's not punitive. But it goes back to what uh Catherine was saying. We want students to have an interest in it. So we talked about incorporating guidance in terms of interest inventories to kind of help try to match. Uh, but we don't want students just taking it to miss a test to give them an extra day or or to miss an assignment. We want them to be invested in it. And I think that's where it becomes a little more productive. But at the same time, how do we promote it? Uh, because sometimes the promotion might ignite that interest in one of those events or activities. So all of all great questions and I'm sure Catherine's taking notes. Uh, my hope is Joyce White is taking notes and I'm taking notes myself. And all of your feedback is welcome and greatly appreciated.
Can I make one more just shout out? So any of you in the Milton uh area, if you are in a leadership position at a company that you feel that we could work with you and um develop your workforce, please be in touch. So I just had to give that shout out, James. I'm always recruiting good business partners. So we are, we would welcome anyone. We provide the structure and make it easy and fun and worthwhile.
And if you want, Catherine, I have a weekly blog that goes home. If you wanna put together something and have that go out, I would gladly send that out. Definitely have people in the town of Milton in leadership roles.
I know. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Next on the agenda, and I hope they're still online.
Um, Superintendent Jet, you have to um stop sharing the screen.
Oh, that's not me. I think that's Joyce White. Thank you very much, Joyce.
Joyce, thank you, Catherine.
I give it a second to let her right at the bottom where it says share screen, you just hit the green arrow up facing up. Thank you. Uh, so next, I I I do wanna elevate a few people. Hold on. And this is some of our student athletes. I am going to elevate, I'm looking at it to make sure Nora Affenato, hold on one second. And I'll promote two panelists. Uh, Sophia Manning, I will promote two panelists. If you folks could turn on your camera and that way it allow us to be, allow you to be seen. And I don't see the others on the call. But one of the reasons why I'm inviting the students to this every year, um, well, it's not every year because we're not as fortunate every year to have Division One athletes signing. And the reason why we do Division One athletes, sometimes it involves a full or significant um scholarship. In in this situation, so far this academic year, we have four Division One um athletes who are signing on to colleges. Some have full scholarships, some may have postgraduate scholarships. I will let them share it with you, but I would just make the announcement and then I'll let you know the two that we have on the call. Uh, I would introduce uh Brian Foley. He will be going to UMass Lowell for baseball. Unfortunately, I don't see him on as a participant. Uh, Charlie Walker, he will be going to Northeastern for baseball. Um, Nora Affenato, who is on here, she's gonna be going to Loyola University in Maryland for cross-country and track. And then we have Sophia Manning, who's gonna be going to Temple University, I believe, on a full scholarship for crew. So I would start, I would start, uh, yes, please give them a round of applause. This is typically, we would have a signing in the auditorium, and I do think that that's coming up. And they get the opportunity to have their coach, coaches uh and family members there along with uh a few friends or possibly teammates. But I thought it was very important to elevate and recognize despite the challenges we had last year with athletics and challenges this year at at the outset. Uh, these young individuals along with a host of other athletes, I wanna make that very clear, some are going on to Division Two. Some are walking on Division One. But these uh young individuals were sought out after uh by college coaches in Division One to have them join their teams. So I would start with first with Nora. Uh, Nora, if you just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your experience as an athlete for those watching and for the school committee members to see.
Nora, so I am committed to Loyola and I've done track indoor and outdoor for all my years of high school. I actually did soccer in the fall of my freshman year, but then I switched to cross-country because I loved the team and the coaching and everything to do with track and running. And so my sister also is actually a G one commit as well, and she's been running in college. And when I saw her do it, I really wanted to do it myself. And so, yeah, I've been talking to coaches last spring. And I finally this fall decided to go to Loyola and I'm really excited.
And the next is Sophia, and then we're opening it up for questions from the school committee members. And I'll continue to watch to see if any of the others jump on the call. With Sophia.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sophia Manning. Um, I'm going to Temple for rowing. Um, I started rowing my freshman year in the spring. Um, I really didn't know what the sport was at first, um, but people said, oh, you're tall, you'd be good at it. So I gave it a shot. Um, and yeah, I've been doing it ever since. And um, I'm really excited. I started talking to coaches um this fall. Um, it was definitely an exciting journey, but um I'm really excited to go to Temple. It was a great fit for me. So, yeah.
Any, any que- and al- also I would say one thing, and they're not here, and this is just hot off the press, and I just got it this morning. But uh also Milton High School Vice Principal, who is also the golf coach, was named uh Coach of the Year um in Massachusetts. So a lot of exciting things in athletics in addition to our individual team success or our team success, we have some individual accolades that should be celebrated as well. And I think uh Ben Kelly's probably too embarrassed to get on because I did acknowledge him on the facilities meeting a little bit before that, and I think it threw him off. But uh, any questions for the two athletes, Sophia and Nora, who are on the call from uh school committee members? Chair Abahat, you're on mute, I believe.
Oh, no, um, A- um, Ava, do you wanna? Yeah, you can call. It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, all right.
Yes, well, thank you Nora and Sophia for coming out and congratulations to you both. Um, it's it's very exciting. Um, and I'm just curious if you can tell us about how you pursued your sport during this last year where everything was so limited and how you were able to um proceed as as you have um this year. It's it's just such an impressive accomplishment. And just wonder if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, um, I mean, for me, a lot of, a big part of um rowing is like the rowing machine. So I'd say the past year, the rowing machine has been kind of like my best friend. So I did a lot of work on that just to try to stay motivated, stay strong for hopefully when things went back to normal, to be right where I was when everything stopped. I'd say that was a big part of it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Um, same for me. Obviously, running's easy to do on your own because you can just run outside. So during the original quarantine, that was my way of like getting out of the house and stuff. It kind of helped me to clear my mind, but it also helped me to be in shape for my future seasons. And the high school did a really good job in like the M S T C A to like organize meets and still let us have something in the fall of like twenty twenty. And we still had a season. It wasn't as competitive, but it definitely helped. And it made it easy like to stay in shape and still have the same experience.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Number Ross Denny.
I simply wanna say congratulations. Job well done. It's really difficult to maintain a sport at the levels that you have been able to and and maintain um good enough GPA to be rel- to be considered for this opportunity. So job well done and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Craig.
Um, I just wanted to cra- congratulate you too and and sort of to piggyback on what member Ross Denny just said. Um, I'm curious um how you juggled all of that academic stuff with all of the sport. Because I know rowing, you get up at the crack of dawn. And and at cross-country, you're just running forever. And so when do you find time to go to the, to do the practices, go to the meets, get your homework done and all of the rest of the stuff? And um, I know both of you are involved in other uh things as well. So because you'll be doing more of that at college.
Um, yeah, um, I love how you know we go early because it's definitely a big, it's an early sport. Um, I'd say, I mean, we're both student athletes, so I know student academics come first. So it definitely has been hard, but I think there's a lot of academic support at the high school. Um, teachers are really good with um extra help, especially like this past year and last year. Um, so I think just going to extra help sessions, just asking questions in class. So I think just going to extra help sessions, just asking questions in class and just being kind of on top of due dates and assignments. I think that was a big part of it. But yeah.
Yeah, is what she said, but also just staying on top of things. It's hard to be on top of things when you have like a tight schedule, but also it makes it more like you have to time manage. So you're almost more productive with like the time that you have and you know what you have to do. It definitely gets tough at times, a little overwhelming, but I feel like we've been doing it for so long. It's almost like second nature to like have that schedule every day.
Thank you both and congratulations again.
Yeah. Dr. Carol.
Actually, you both already, I think, sort of answered or shared more about the things I was going to ask about. So I won't, I won't ask any of those questions. I just, I all to echo the congratulations and I'm excited for both of you and all your teammates and classmates who are going on to pursue athletics in different ways in college. I was many years ago now that I was a student athlete myself, but it was such a rich experience to, like you were both just saying, to find fulfillment in those different areas and camaraderie and motivation and strength and have fun. And I know you can tell how proud your community is of you. So congratulations.
Member White.
I just wanted to add my congratulations to Sophia and Nora and tell you that for these last 18 months to be so successful, both academically and with a sport during a pandemic, really speaks to your commitment. And so Nora, on another note, I am related to you through your, on your father's side, I am, I think, your second cousin once removed or third cousin. So I know your family very well and my niece and my nephew both went to Loyola, Maryland and loved it and did really well. They had a great experience. So congratulations, ladies.
About to hear that. Good to know. And thank you.
You can tell your dad you met me on the screen.
All right.
Yeah, we, we send our congratulations to the both of you and to Brian and to Charlie as well. And we're very proud of you. I love that you said student athletes. I'm sure that if your parents are listening or they watch later on, they're going to, and your teachers and everyone who's been working and supporting you all these years would be very proud to hear you say that. And God speaks to both of you and, and so everyone and good luck. Enjoy every minute of your senior year, every minute.
Thank you so much.
And if I could close before they, if I could close before they end, I think they're being a little modest. They're not just a one-sport athlete in some cases. Sophia also plays or did volleyball in the fall, basketball in the winter and then crew. And Nora, are you, did you play? I know you said your freshman year, you played soccer. Did you play any other sports this past in 2020, 21?
Well, running, it's like cross-country in the fall and then indoor track and outdoor track. So I've done like all three of those for my four years.
And so I think Division One sports will be a little bit different because you won't be in class for six and a half hours a day, every day. It's you have that little bit of a break, but you definitely will be practicing and on the road in some of those cases. So I had the luxury of seeing these folks perform and so kudos to them. I, I'll be honest, cross-country, I don't get out and run with them, but if it's indoors or something like that, same thing with crew. But great students and very proud of you guys and good luck in your future endeavors. And hopefully you finish out your senior year and there's a strong note. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for having us. So much.
We, we were going to have members from the performance or the production of Chicago come in. Unfortunately, they could not make it to this meeting. But again, many folks had the opportunity to see the performance. And despite the mask, I think our students did an exceptional job showcasing their talent. Similar to our student athletes, they're devoted every day for two, in some cases, two to three to four hours. And it increases as you get closer to the production. And so I do want to commend the performers, not only those who are on stage, but those behind the scenes, working the lights, the sound, the stage and the setup. It is a collaborative effort. And I, I, I put the performance, the productions, not only at the high school, but the middle school up to any school in the Commonwealth. I think they do an outstanding job and it's, it's quite frankly, it's kind of like a semi-pro to the pro teams. I think that for high school students, they do an outstanding job. And I was very thankful to see the community come out despite the concerns about COVID and, and show their support for our student performance, performance. So I just wanted to share that on their behalf and unfortunately they're not here. I see hands up and I don't know if those hands remained up from the last one or folks have questions.
No, we, I just, I think Dr. Crigg had probably pronounced the same thing, but I went to see the performance. Did you go, did you go see it too, Elaine? It was, it, turn your, you're muted. It was really fantastic.
Yeah, a family member in my household went to see it on Friday, loved it so much, went back on Saturday and told me, you know, the Chicago is just celebrating its 25th year on Broadway. And told me they couldn't believe that it could be any better on Broadway than what the Milton High School had produced. So you, you're right there, Mr. Jet. It, it felt like a professional I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to see it, but there were accolades all around.
Yes, I, I, I went, former chair, Virella contacted me and said, I got tickets and we're going. And I went with Chilla and we went on Sunday to the matinee. I think it was Sunday, yeah. And it was great. The kid, the student, the performers were amazing with the masks. I mean, it's just a testament to everyone, the parents, the backstage people, the musicians. Everyone's commitment to the programming is, is really commendable and it was, it was a great performance. It was the best quality and always feel so lucky whenever I see one of the shows. It was really great. So thanks to them. And, and next time they'll come to school committee. Maybe we'll be in person. They could do a little singing in person next time.
So thank you, guys. And then my last quick update, unless there's any questions. I just wanted to give a, a, a quick COVID update. For those who are not paying attention to the numbers in this Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the numbers rose to 2,183 positive cases yesterday. Unfortunately, because I was on a meeting before this, I didn't get the updated numbers for today. The seven-day average is 1,995. And again, that's across the Commonwealth. We did have a spike last week. Last week, we had a total of three staff and 16 students. A vast majority of those students were in a second grade class at the Glover School. Kim Coughlin, the head nurse, reached out to Carolyn Cacella, the Board of Health, also reached out to DPH and also the Department of Elementary Secondary Education to let them know about the increase. We weren't advised to do anything different, but I just wanted folks to know that because we are embarking upon the flu season where activities are moving indoors. I want people to be alert. That was last week's, last Wednesday's reporting. Today, we reported to the state that we had seven staff, I mean, three staff and seven students. And I want to be clear, the guidance has changed a little bit. There's some sort of misunderstanding out in the general public. If folks are positive, we're not reporting it. Anybody that's positive, you could be positive and asymptomatic. If you're positive and asymptomatic, you still have to quarantine if you are positive. However, if you're a close contact and you're fully vaccinated, you just have to monitor yourself for symptoms, but you can continue to come to work as a staff member or as a student. Then we have the test and stay program, which I can't stress it enough. We've done text messages. We send stuff home in native language. We continue to communicate. We ask people to allow their kids to participate or give their consent to participate in the test and stay. There's two different trajectories. One is if you're a close contact, unvaccinated and you don't give consent, you automatically have to go home. But if you give consent, we could do the test and stay in school. And if the child is negative, they could continue to stay in school if the parents decide to. Since the inception of the test and stay, we tested 262 students. Only eight were positive. Out, out of that eight, believe it or not, Kim Coughlin just reached out to Desi again because of their testing program. Under the Bi-Nex now, 50%, four out of the eight were false positive. And it was overturned with a PCR test within 48 hours. So the point being is the test and stay is allowing kids to stay in school. And we're, we're identifying it, not all close contacts and necessarily going to contract the virus, but this is the way to keep us open. So I wanted to give that brief update. And as I mentioned, the previous school committee meeting, Manette Community Health Center, which has been our partner in vaccinations and also testing, are not going to be doing in the near future a vaccination for our students five through 11 simply because they need that primary care, I mean, a pediatrician or family doctor on hand and they're being spread too thin with a, a, a wider population now eligible for the vaccination. So I know last week there was, there was two sessions on the 12th and the 13th. I will be reaching out with, to Manette to see if there are other days that I could hopefully advertise, whether it be in a blog or sending a separate email for folks who want to access the vaccination. And I continue to say, please speak with your pediatrician to determine what is right for your child, your family in making that decision. So I don't know if anybody had any questions about COVID update for us. Dr. Crigg.
Yeah, I just had a question about the percentage that have joined the test and stay program. At last I heard it was not quite at 60% and I was wondering if that had risen since I last got an update.
So you're very well in, unfortunately, I was out of the office and I did reach and I will get that information. I will send it to you guys in the email and I would definitely get that. Not only will I get the percentage of folks who elected into or gave consent for the test and stay, but also for the faculty and staff who the percentage are vaccinated. I will tell you this, it is a mandate. And as of this morning, I've only had four requests for religious exemption and I had three requests for medical exemptions out of all of faculty and staff. So, but I just need to get the, I just need to get the exact numbers because it doesn't mean that everybody fulfilled that and we are working on it. And for the viewing audience, just so you know, although the school committee gave the mandate on the 25th of August, it wasn't ratified with the school committee central office and the MEA until I believe it was October 15th, which whatever, no, excuse me, October 1st because it was someone's birthday on that date. And so we wanted to, it's a nice little gift. But so now we're just in the process of going through all of that because once you make the mandate for those who weren't vaccinated, you had to get the first shot and you can't get the second shot until 21 days later or at least three weeks later. So for those who don't know. And I do see in the chat box, today's number is 2,650 new cases. So thank you for that update. I just didn't have a chance to look at that. So thank you, guys. Any other question? Oh, Dr. Carol.
Thanks. I was just gonna put in a plug for the Manette Community Health. I think they're having ongoing clinics. It looks like Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at different hours. But that those are ongoing and appointments are recommended, but walk-ins are accommodated. And I took my seven-year-old there and was really impressed at how smooth and well-run the entire operation was. I know a number of Milton kids have already been over there. It's an eight-minute drive from my house in, in Milton. So it's pretty convenient. Yeah, 180 old colony have in Quincy. And, and the website is manetchc.org, M-A-N-E-T-C-H-C dot org. And I know you've been putting this in your blogs, but just my own experience was really great and so thankful. And thank you for making us aware of that resource and close by to our community.
And, and thank you for highlighting that. And I would echo those, the same sentiment. They have been great with us as a partner with testing and also the vaccination. But I also want folks to know, if not your pediatrician's office, you could also get it at Walgreens. You could get it at certain CVS or Walgreens. And so if it doesn't fit in your schedule during Manette's offerings, definitely look at it on the weekend. And again, what fits your, your child and your family situation, I think is very, very important. One of the things I can say is they're not getting the same dose as an adult would get. It is a different dose. So for those who have concerns, again, speak with your pediatrician or your family doctor. Any other questions?
I think Member Rose Marion has a question.
I just, I just wanted to add on that I would encourage all of our staff who've already been vaccinated, who may be six months out from their vaccines. They will be eligible for boosters. Probably tomorrow, I think the FDA is going to be approving that. And just want to keep everyone safe and encourage folks to take advantage of those opportunities as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Superintendent Jet. And please extend our thanks to Kim Coughlin and all the nurses and the staff and everyone involved in the Milton Public Schools who have worked really hard to keep students safe, keep learning in person. I know that it is a challenge that the pandemic continues to impact education systems across the Commonwealth and across the country. So we really appreciate all the efforts that everyone is making. And that goes particularly to the, the community, to the parents who participating in the test and stay, getting their students vaccinated, keeping students home when they're not feeling well and just really making an effort to keep everyone safe and keep school open, in-person learning. That's our goal, return to some normalcy for students. So we really appreciate all the efforts everyone's making. We know that it's not easy. And perhaps then for our, our December 1st meeting, Superintendent Jet, we could have an update on the percentage of the staff who are vaccinated. And then I don't, this is not, in, I'm suddenly probably have an answer to, but I don't know. And maybe some other school community member does know. If, if, is the Commonwealth tracking students vaccination rates for different ages? I know that at the high school they are because there's that, that percentage of 80% you could apply for the, the waiver for the masks. But I'm just wondering if you've heard anything, Superintendent Jet, in your conversations with Desi about the tracking younger students and the percentage of those students who are vaccinated.
I think that will apply to elementary level as well. It's for any school community, community that reaches that threshold. And as stated in previous meetings, we knew we were having a challenge at the middle school because we had 245 students. It went from 263 down to 245 who were not eligible up until the recent announcement. So there's a strong possibility, depending on where we get, we could have the high school and the middle school reaching that 80% threshold in the coming weeks. And I say weeks just because those students who are getting their first shot has to get their second shot 21 days later. So it depends. And so we are probably looking at closer to reaching that 80% threshold, probably sometime in January, depending on where the students get their shots. And so I'm, I'm sure it applies to that. The only thing that I would caution, again, if those numbers are accurate, 2,650, if those are accurate, they're climbing. And if you think about it, it goes back to Veterans Day, which is just, and I'm not blaming it on Veterans Day, but sometimes when students are off, they're out and about, they're doing things. Then you had a couple of days of stormy weather and if people wanted to get together, they're doing so indoors. I think that's why the commissioner extended his mask mandate until January 15th, on or about January 15th, to get through the holidays to make sure that folks are being safe.
Yeah, no, I, I know. I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking ahead and thinking about, you know, questions as we move forward as a community. And, and what, what it will look like as we move forward to the, through the rest of the school year. So thank you so much for your update. Anything else for Superintendent Jet? Nope. All right. So we're going to move on to Citizen Speak now. If you would like to make a comment at tonight's meeting, please raise your hand and you will be elevated to to a panelist status and you will be able to make a comment or an inquiry if we ask that you state your name and your address, that you keep your comments. If we ask that you state your name and your address, um that you keep your comments to three minutes, um that you do not speak directly about anybody, any one person, except of course for yourself, and that you are thoughtful and gracious in your comments to the community. We are not going to respond, but we will take notes and then respond at a future date if it's possible to provide you with answers or through email.
So if anybody would like to speak at this time, if if you could uh do so by indicating or raising your hand and I would elevate you to speak. If you're not sure how to do it, you could put that in the chat box or the Q and A. If I see if you wanna speak, then I would go to you and elevate you uh to speak. Going once, twice. Chair Everhard, at this point in time, I'll give it just twenty more seconds, folks. If you wanna speak and if you're not sure how to raise your hand through the uh system, you could put it in the chat and I would elevate you to speak. But at this time, I do not see any hands raised to speak.
Okay. Thank you Superintendent Jet. Please feel free to reach out to us through email. If you have any questions um of anything that you saw tonight at the meeting, or anything that you um are concerned or even happy about. We always hear, like to hear happy things as well from the community. Um, alright, so I'm gonna ask um Member Rose Maron to give us an update on the MASC, MASs conference that she attended for us. I think that, I don't know if anyone else went um virtually, I think Member White did as well. So you both may give us an update on how that went and any feedback or takeaways that you received at those meetings.
Um, yes, I I participated remotely. Um, the um MASC and MASs used uh an app um called Hoover that has a Zoom um sort of embedded in their um platform. And it really made it it very easy to participate remotely. Um, and even to the point that when I had selected three different workshops during the same time, that I could jump from one to the next um and stay in the same place. It was, it was really pretty convenient. Um, but it was, it was very well done. There were a few technical snafus, but um all in all, I I think that the the um remote opportunity was excellent. Um, and it was also a a great opportunity to hear from folks who are doing what we do all across the state and the challenges that everyone has been facing um in this past twenty months or so um with the pandemic and and um the the challenges that that everyone is um dealing with. And um it was, it was um really kind of uplifting to hear how um everyone is is um working to uh meet the moment um and the need. And there was a um uh one school committee member who was part of a um general session um looking at uh school districts at the center of polarized community debates. Um, and this was a school committee member from Somerville who talked about, we are the only elected officials who represent people who have no voice. And um I think it's an important thing to keep in mind. We have a a great responsibility in in our roles as elected officials. And um and it I I it that resonated with me. And and I think um in addition of our, to our efforts to try to bring our student representatives' voice to the table, um it will, it will help us um uh to um meet, meet their needs and and address their concerns. Um, and also people talked about how to keep things moving in the right direction and um, you know, continuing to focus on core values, knowing them, communicating them and living by them. Um, and you know, I think it was, it was just kind of a shot in the arm um to to hear that that others are are um uh dealing with the the same challenges that we all have been. Um, and um some, some very um thoughtful presentations. Um, I attended one on facilities and maintenance as the chair of the facilities subcommittee, which was um very helpful. And we talked about that a little bit at our facilities advisory committee uh right before this meeting. There was a federal legislation update um that that was helpful to hear. Um, and that was before the infrastructure bill got passed, but it was really, you know, uh you know, really right to the moment of knowing uh what's going on. Um, and um, and then the, I served as the um the delegate representing Milton um at the delegate assembly. And um we voted on uh was it nine resolutions that we all had um vote, taken a vote on here in Milton. And um all nine of those passed um as as we had voted. There were um a few very minor amendments, but um they they all passed. Um, I don't know if you want me to take the time to go through them. We've all read them already. Um, but um I think it 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 it, a lot of them are about um uh platform for MASC in the the um advocacy that MASC will be doing on our behalf um towards legislation and bills that are being filed and a- and advocacy on our behalf. So um it it's, we, I think we're we're um being well represented in that regard. I don't know, Betty, if you have anything else to add from your time there?
I thought a lot of the workshops were excellent and I also jumped around um to a bunch of them. One of them was how to build your budget and how to advocate for your budget. And then I also listened in on um a lot of mental health ones, cause you know, that's where my background is, about meeting the mental health needs of children after the pandemic. But I also listened in to the debate on the resolutions. And two interesting things that I that I came away with is that they had, they had a platform to advocate for electric buses uh and to go fully electric. And you know, the discussion though was all about how there's no competition for bus contracts and how it's difficult, you know, to deal with the bus issue. So even though I think people philosophically um were in support of electric buses, they were concerned about the financial impact on the budget for that. And then the other really interesting discussion was the um the use of Indian names uh for mascots for different schools and over the Commonwealth and how they're really um really wanting to change that and to do away with it. I also noticed that that's been in the Boston Globe all of this week as well. So that was a very interesting discussion with a lot of Native American um teaching staff and faculty talking about what it was like for them as as young children growing up and how they cringe when they hear those names and that we, you know, the, bring sensitivity to that topic. So that was a very interesting discussion. I actually wasn't gonna go on to listen, but I was home and I thought, well, let me listen. And I thought the discussion that morning was really, really good.
Thank you both for attending. Does anyone else have any comments or questions about it? We really appreciate your time that you took to go and um to to represent Milton. So thank you both. I really appreciate it.
It's nice to be retired.
Betty keeps saying that. Alright, the last thing from me is that there's a revised school committee meeting calendar that Charlene sent to everyone. It just reflects some of the things we discussed last time, that we moved um the conversation to the budget, the presentation to our next meeting, which will be on December first. And then the vote on that um budget, fiscal year twenty-three budget um to December fifteenth meeting. I don't know if um Finance Chair Dr. Craighead knows when we would, might be presenting to the Warren Committee. I don't actually have a date for that on, okay, so we don't know that, but it might be sometime in December? Or January? Okay. So our next meeting, which will be on the first, will be all about the budget. Um, and we are looking forward to hearing that. And then we won't vote on that until the following meeting, which will be on the fifteenth. Um, the the budget that we will present to Warren Committee. We all know and that there will be a vote, there'll be discussions and then more things will happen. And there'll be further discussions and and um and votes and and conversations. But that'll be in two next meetings. And then we move some of the site councils to different meetings as well. And then also on the fifteenth, where we'll vote on the school committee budget, we will also hear from VIVU. Um, so that will be the bulk of that meeting. Um, I'm imagining that our December first meeting will be all about the budget and discussing that. And then the the fifteenth will really be more about the vote for the budget and then also these presentation. So if you have any, as we go through the year, we can add um to the calendar. We just updated as we go along um from here. I noticed that um that in January nineteenth, we have on the calendar right now that we will be talking about the program of studies, which is one of the things um that we would like to make sure that we talk to the high school about the dual enrollment program. Um, and that gets, so that it gets voted on, so that we can have it as part of that discussion. So we can talk about that um as we move through the next couple of meetings. But just take a look at the calendar. If you have any questions, let me know. And that's all for me. Thank you all very much. I'm gonna turn this over to the powerful finance committee. With the Craighead, Members White and Ross Denny, you're up.
Um, we met yesterday. Um, it was a relatively brief meeting. Um, we um discussed and voted on um the sick leave policy or usage for non-unit uh employees. And that would be people who are not members uh of the unit, uh of the um union. That's what I mean by non-unit. So in contracts for um both administrators and um faculty, they are allowed to take sick leave for in their own employee's uh illness or medical care. The illness of a member of their immediate family uh as defined by the Family Medical uh Leave Act. Um, for the care of the employee or an immediate family member, uh well, that says the same thing. Oh, for the care of, for illness of and care of uh that same uh immediate family member and um pursuant to the Mass- Massachusetts Parental Leave Act. So those union members get that uh leave and we need to extend that to all of our employees. So we voted on that. Um, and that is now uh in place. We also discussed um ARPA and ESTR funds, uh what's left. We're gonna be getting um more of an update on that on our next meeting at, on November thirtieth, which precedes that December first meeting. We are waiting to hear uh about our ARPA proposal. Um, we don't have a decision um on that uh yet at this time. But um, but as I said, we'll be meeting again on the thirtieth and I'll have more information at our next uh school committee meeting. So the only other thing um I have to do is to uh make two motions for approval uh of vendor warrants. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number twenty payable on November tenth, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and four dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Thank you, Betty. Um, all in favor, do I have to do a roll call if I can see hands? I do. Okay.
For the vendor warranty, yeah.
Okay. Um, so Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Carol?
Yep, yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Chair Everhard?
Yes.
Yes.
And uh myself as a yes, okay?
Sure.
Um, also, I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number twenty-one payable on uh November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and six thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Um, so this is another uh roll call. Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Carol?
Yes.
Chair Everhard?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, are there any abstentions?
I'm an abstain.
Okay, great. So that's a five, zero, one uh on that vendor warrant. So so concludes my report. Thank you.
I believe Superintendent Jet has a question.
Oh. Not a question. I just wanted the, one of the things that came up is the community project funding through Congresswoman Ayesha uh Ayana Presley's office. Um, I did get word back this week uh that the funding uh of the project was passed out of the House of Representative within the Labor, Health and Human Service and Relations Agency Funding Bill. The Senate is currently in the process of moving the various funding bills out of the Senate. And they expect the House and Senate to move on some sort of a long-term funding bill by the end of this academic, I mean, the end of this calendar year. So in other words, that money that we put in for early in the summer uh through the community project funding grant application with Congresswoman uh Presley. Um, they did uh Ayesha Controller, her deputy uh chief of staff, did uh reach out to me um and I got that email. So just to let you guys know that they are still moving forward with that. However, there's no definitive uh timeline for whether or not we're gonna one hundred percent get that, but we're still plugging forward.
Um, thank you. Um, Dr. Craighead, I have a quick question. So as you think about the conversations we'll be having in December, um I remember at one of the community forums, or not the community forums, at the listening session that we went to, one of our community members said, you know, that any advocacy work or anything that needed to happen, that letting them know as soon as possible or whenever we could share more information with the community. So I'm I'm questioning, uh, do you think that we might do some virtual, obviously, presentations for the community after, before the Warren Committee vote? I can't recall, um it's all kind of a blur sometimes, when we'd go to the schools and we have a chance for people to ask questions about it. I'm just thinking that, or maybe that might be a good forum, Dr. Carol. I don't know. As we, as we really enter budget season, to really educate the community about that piece.
The Warren Committee vote last year came lit, too late for us to really have the kind of time to make presentations and um develop that advocacy. And as as far as I recall, um that citizen who said that was really talking about, hmm, you know, uh we had, we had
I know, I'm just thinking, planning forward. Yeah, I know, I know last year was like
We will be trying to do it earlier. Um, on the other hand, though, I'm not sure that we will have um, you know, within the, within the next two months, I'm not sure that everything will be coming as quickly as we might want it, but um, but we will, we'll do our best to get it out there when we can. After that, after school committee votes on it, then um, yes, I totally agree. We need to make uh presentations to the community.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking about the quality review comments about that piece, you know, being, uh even though I feel like we, we trying to do that, think about that from a different angle and and be and be creative this year, this time around. Okay, great. I thank you for all your work, finance and policy, right? Powerhouses of school committee. Alright, uh Member Rose Maron, our favorite topic, school building committee.
Um, well, um, I had hoped to have more of an update for you um tonight than I do, but um I I'll tell you what I know. Uh, we are um still hopeful to get an article into the Winter Town Meeting um that's now scheduled for February twenty-eighth. Um, I think it's a little bit of a long shot at this point um because there's still a fair amount that would need to be done for our article to be in order, um including um part of the, and this article would be for um uh doing a land swap to uh, for us to acquire the property that we've discussed um uh near Brooksfield, between Brooksfield and and between Brooksfield and Blue Hills Parkway. But the contract for the surveyors who needed to survey the parcels in that vicinity was just approved very recently. And the surveyors have to go survey the land. And then the town council has to be in touch with the Attorney General's Office to begin conversations around what would be considered an acceptable swap in terms of non-conservation land that we would be trading for this conservation land. And so it's a lot to get done. And the warrant is closing, I think it's December 2nd. And so that's, we're still working on it and hopeful, but I think that it's a stretch to make that all come together in time to do that. In which case, if that doesn't, our next option would be to bring it to the Spring Annual Town Meeting in May. So there's that. The School Building Committee had a presentation by Carl Franceschi from DRA, who did some conceptual drawings for us of what either an elementary school, a four-strand elementary school would look like on the parcel of land that is proposed and/or a new middle school. And so he put those together and presented some drafts of those drawings that will be revised before they're finalized. But it was exciting for all of us to see. And really, it made it all seem much more real, talking about, you know, playgrounds and parking lots and bus routes and how the buildings might be arranged and appropriate buffers for the neighbors and all of those things that had been considered. So that was exciting. And as soon as that is finalized, we'll bring that to share with the school committee as well. And then I guess the other thing to report on is we're working on a video about the overcrowding in our schools. And I've been working with Tom Pila from Milton Access TV and Sean O'Rourke. And we've been going around to all of the elementary schools the past week and to Pierce Middle School. And we filmed at two of the elementary schools in Pierce last week. And we got some time-lapse videos of arrival and dismissal at Cunningham Collycutt. And we're going to go back there in the week after Thanksgiving to do some more. But it's really a way of capturing the changes that have happened inside the buildings that those people who are just driving by our beautiful buildings can't really see. And the thing I really thought about a lot since I've been there for these tours and the filming is just what a testament it is to the creativity and effort that the staff and the principals in each of the schools have done to make these buildings work with the volume of students that we have that is way exceeds our facilities. And they're done in ways that, there's a lot of orchestration of days so that there's this synchronized movement of one class moving out of a space and another class moving in. And like, everything is timed like an orchestra. I mean, it really, it is really quite remarkable, the amount of planning and effort that has gone into both dealing with the COVID restrictions, but, you know, on top of the overcrowding and the changes in the space to accommodate the numbers. And it really is quite remarkable and so impressive to see the effort that has gone into it. And the principals have talked about, you know, I asked them, what are you going to do with all those plans when this isn't necessary anymore? Just throw them out or burn them. You know, it's just so much work that's gone into it. But it's really to be able to have the days move smoothly so that the students are really not aware of a lot of the challenges that they're working around. So it really is impressive. And I'm hoping that this video will come together so that our residents of the town can understand the story of what's going on in our schools. So that's pretty much my report for tonight.
Any questions for Member Rose Marin? We are going to be standing in that building someday. We know it. Total faith. We are going to be there for the celebration, the ribbon cutting, whatever it is then, we're going to be there. And we're going to, for our students and our community, it's going to be a great day. So thank you for all your work. And whatever we can do to support the warrant or anything, you just let us know. December 2nd seems far but close at the same time, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. The last item here is approval of our minutes from our November 3rd meeting. Did everyone see the minutes from Maureen Kennedy and?
Can't hear you, Margaret.
Shut myself off. Can you imagine? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. We'll have a second, and then any changes anyone wants to make, we can do that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Dr. Craighead and Dr. Carol.
Thanks. I just have one sort of small piece on page seven.
Okay.
When we, it's recapping our discussion of the face coverings policy at that time. The third bullet, under my name in that section, says vaccination rates within our schools. When a school reaches 80%, as we talked about a little bit earlier tonight, I just thought we should probably clarify that line so that anybody reading understands what we're referring to, which is the opportunity per DESI
Yep.
as of now, when a school community reaches that total 80% vaccinated threshold, then you have the opportunity to consider whether you want to, you know, change your face covering policy. So I just, I don't know the most efficient way for that to be clarified.
Yeah, so probably, probably what I think we should do then, Dr. Carol, is we should not vote on the minutes tonight, that we should reword that so it properly reflect the actual way that it's outlined by DESI and then vote on them.
Just to refer to the DESI guideline there. So people don't, they know where that 80% figure is.
Yep. Yep. No, I hear you, and that's a very good point. Does everyone agree that we can move that? So we need to fix the wording to that and to reflect the accuracy of the policy and then also the exemptions by DESI. Yes, Superintendent Jett?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify. Once you hit the 80%, you could apply to the state for the waiver and take that away. So it's, even though, I mean, we could make the decision, but right now it's a state mandate until.
So thank you for bringing that to our attention, Dr. Carol. I think I'm just going to hold off on a vote then, and we'll bring them back for the next time. Was there anything else, anyone else noted in the minutes? That's a very important thing to have, correct in the minutes. All right, great. Do you have any old business from our last few minutes? I don't think so. I looked through my notes. And our next meeting agenda items, we already discussed the two. Dr. Carol, do you think there'll be any policies that you would like to bring to the committee next time for consideration?
I hope so. At our next Subcommittee meeting next week, we will be continuing the discussion of the professional hiring policy, which we've discussed at a few meetings now. So that may, but it will depend on what, it will depend on our conversation at the Subcommittee, whether we're bringing that to the next school committee meeting or a later date, but I will let Charlene know.
Okay, wonderful. Any other Subcommittee's that think they might like to update us, Member White?
Health and Wellness.
Okay. We will get the Students Advisory Council to weigh in for the next meeting, if they have anything they'd like to bring to us, Dr. Carol, or invite them to be participants in any of our advisory Subcommittee meetings to have a conversation with the advisor about that.
I'll be meeting with the student representatives on Monday.
Wonderful.
So I will get their input on that. And I guess invite, well, invite them to participate in one or both of those December meetings.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. And then maybe we can touch base, Member Ross Denny, about the curriculum. And I can't remember, Instruction or Curriculum Advisory Committee, either an update or a schedule for meetings and things like that. Okay. So I guess that's it for the next meeting. Does anyone else have anything?
No.
I guess that we can make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Dr. Craighead raised her hand rather quickly. Before we adjourn the meeting, I just want to, I know that, you know, as we think about Thanksgiving as a country and our history and we rethink all of our, how we celebrate things, I do want to take a moment to be thankful for all that we have in this community, for our rich and active community members, for our wonderful students. Like, tonight was such a great example. The careers, you know, the careers, schools to careers group came, the students that came to talk about their athletics, the musical, and all of you and all the work that you're doing. And I really can't, and all that people have done to keep people safe. Like, I can't let the time go without expressing my thanks as a Chair of the School Committee and to all of you and to the community for everything that we've gone through and everything we will go through. But really, I'm grateful for the riches that we have. And even though lots of people are struggling, I'm grateful for those people who reach out a helping hand to make a difference in our community. I don't know if, you know, I just wanted to say that before we adjourn for the meeting and as we head into the break next week.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all of you and Superintendent Jett and Ms. Janet Sheehan and Amy and everyone, Charlene and Lori especially over there at the admin. So, all right, we have a motion. It's been seconded, and this will be a roll call vote. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Rose Marin?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Margaret Abart, yes. All right, everyone, have a peaceful rest of your week. Stay safe.
Bye, everyone.